Pledge of Allegiance.
That's you.
It's you. Could I get a couple scout leaders, guys up here?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God in a visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Consider a motion to adopt the June 11th, 2024 Board of Education Agenda.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes nine zero. How about a safety message?
June is National Safety Month, and the first piece we're going to talk about a little bit is safety engagement. And as we think about safety engagement, there's always just a few things to think about. Where am I at? What am I doing? How can I get hurt? How can others get hurt? And more importantly, what can be done to prevent any injury by anybody? So those are the key pieces as we think about safety engagement. But I think one little thing to add to that, and just as we look at the, excuse me, as it, we've had varying things, but let's assume it's not raining out, and the stinging insects. As we work outdoors, we encounter many stinging insects. At best, stings cause pain and irritation. At worst, severe allergic reaction. The CDC estimates there are around 100 fatal allergic reactions to bee, wasp, and hornet stings annually. So I just mentioned that. So if you happen to know that you are allergic to bees and things, the importance of having an EpiPen and making sure that the people around you know about that allergy or potential. We had a worker at a line energy, just doing his normal job, and of our line crews guys, he was up in a bucket truck and got stung. But fortunately, his crew members knew that he was allergic, so they were able to get up and apply to EpiPen and quite literally saved his life. So, but just remember, where am I at? What am I doing? And most importantly, how can we prevent anyone from getting hurt? Thank you.
Oh, now I don't even have to push the button. Thank you. All right. Hello, everybody. I am Laura Madison. I live at 2206 Kellogg Ave here in Janesville, representing the South Side. I am here tonight in my capacity as president of the Janesville Education Association to ask the district to intentionally work with the JEA. Last summer, we agreed to monthly meetings to proactively address common concerns. These meetings did not happen. We didn't meet until April, and that meeting was combined with our first negotiations meeting. I'm here to present the JEA's petition requesting that you meet with us to identify concrete ways that the impact of the new health insurance plan can be financially offset by the district. We have 432 signatures. That is close to half of the SDJ staff. That does not include those who are afraid of signing due to possible repercussions. These insurance changes are especially burdensome for our paraprofessionals, custodials, maintenance, and other staff. I've emailed you some of their comments. If you have not yet had time to read them, please take a moment and do so. The way that the insurance changes were passed on the April 23rd board meeting was atypical. The insurance information was not passed through the Personal Policy and Curriculum Committee. The proposal was presented to the board commissioners without much time for them to process the information. The most disappointing part of our new insurance plan is this. It would have only cost the district 1.7 million instead of 1.3 million to keep staff's insurance plan the same. I'll rephrase it. Only $400,000 more to keep our co-insurance deductible the same. This disappointment was compounded during the next month's May 14th board meeting when the board approved the district's proposal to pay 4.9 million towards a loan that is due in five years. The district definitely had $400,000 and could have kept our co-insurance. If the district has a true goal of recruiting and retaining staff, then the prioritizing and the listening to of staff needs to happen. Almost half the staff have signed this petition. Are you listening to them? Please make the decision to work with the Janesville Education Association to identify concrete ways that the impact of the new health insurance plan can be financially offset by the district. As always, I am available to discuss anything with any of you. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to address the board? We'd love to hear from you. Okay. Point one, consider approval of the consent agenda.
So.
There's a motion. Motion and second, who seconded it? Susan did?
Michelle.
Oh, Michelle did. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously nine to zero. All right, moving on. Five point one. Recognize spring athletic state qualifiers. Hi Clayton.
Hello. Thanks for having us tonight. You're gonna, I'm gonna introduce you to our state track coaches along with our principal in a second, but real quick, just a quick thank you to our spring coaches. We had a great season again. We were up, our participation rate was up 17% this year from last year, 207 to 242 athletes that participated in the spring. I just want to thank Coach Kerry Michaels as our head baseball coach, and kind of highlight Keegan Skripchek and Carter Smalley, who were Big Eight All-Conference. Coach Andy Nguyen-Soxey, he was a first-year head coach, and we measure success on a lot of things. And if you're going to measure it on skill growth, this was the most wins that our girls had since 2017, so huge improvement there. We had four girls on All-Conference Team, Tiana Anderson, Haven Jones, Ken Minnick, and Camilla Thor's daughter. And then boys tennis, Coach Mike Furman, he's been here over 20 years, highlighted by Romeo Kavistad, who had a deep trip into sectionals. Coach Furman also hosted the Big Eight Conference Tournament. I did very little, Coach Furman did most of that, so all the credit goes to him. Coach Nolan Sterns, our head golf coach, Grady Luterman was All-Conference this year, and then we had a couple academic All-State, Noah Herbst and Carson Truesdale. And then our softball coach, Coach Bob Getka, and we had numerous girls make it on the Big Eight All-Conference Team, Kennedy Prine, Lily Keller, Gentry Reed, Delaney King, Kalen Minnick, and Addison Nelson. And with that, I would like to introduce you to Coach Shu and Coach Riley to talk to you about our state track team. Run them over there again.
Sure.
All right, good evening. My name is Kat Riley, head Parker Girls Track and Field Coach. For the girls' team, we have four state qualifiers joining us tonight. Unfortunately, summer is a busy time for athletes with work and training for other sports. To start us off with our individual state qualifiers, sophomore Harper Brandonberg qualified for finals in the open 400-meter dash and placed seventh overall with a time of 58.59 seconds. Unfortunately, senior Maya Barnes is unable to be here tonight, but she placed 11th in the 400-meter dash with a time of 59.43, and Maya will be continuing her track and field career as a Bearcat at Northwest Missouri State. Moving on to our relays, the four-by-200-meter relay, which consisted of juniors Mia Riley, Shay Shu, and Violet McQ, as well as freshman Olivia Schobert, with sophomores Micaiah Smith and Avea Greer as alternates. The four-by-200-meter relay placed 23rd overall with a time of 1 minute 48.37 seconds. And lastly, the four-by-400-meter relay team, which advanced to finals, seeded as 10th, but on championship Saturday pulled away with a seventh-place finish with a time of 4 minutes and 4.02 seconds. The four-by-four relay consisted of senior Maya Barnes, freshman Olivia Schobert, junior Shay Shu, and sophomore Harper Brandonberg, with sophomore Micaiah Smith as an alternate. I'm very proud of these girls for their dedication this season and competing at the highest level against the best in Wisconsin. Coaches and athletes of the Parker Track and Field Team would like to thank the school district for supporting us while we well-represented Parker High School at the state track and field meet. Thank you.
All right. First of all, thanks for having us. I'm Coach Shu, Dick Shu, the head track, boys track coach at Parker. Thanks to the school board and the school district for allowing us to compete at the state meet in lacrosse, and these young men did not disappoint. As a team, these young men finished sixth place at the state meet. That's our highest finish since 2005. We had our first state champion since 1997, Kayden Brandonberg. Kayden did not lose a 400 race all year. He had the fastest time in the 400 across all divisions. He was the state champion indoor and a state champion in the outdoor and finished fourth in the 200-meter dash. So congratulations, Kayden, representing Parker. Next up, we'll talk about our relays. Kayden was our only individual representative, but we had two relays. First of all, our four-by-two team, we have two students that were not here, John Guinega and Cody Slater, weren't able to make it, but Paul Kim and Avery Eastman were on that team. They qualified for the state meet, running a school record 129.10. And what's very, really makes you proud, these young men placed 14th at the state meet, and they did it without Kayden, who is one of the best 200-meter runners in the state. So they ran without him and still placed 14th in the state in the four-by-two. Finally, our four-by-four team with these three young men, Kayden, Avery, and Paul Kim, they came into the state meet as the eighth seed overall. In prelims, we broke the school record, running a 320.50, putting us as the third seed going into the finals. I don't know if you guys got, if anyone got a chance to see, but it was a phenomenal race. We went head-to-head with Chipewa Falls. We came up a half a second short and placed second. I was filming it, so I didn't even realize the time at the end, but their second-place finish of 316.73, according to my research, and I went back over 20 years, and it is the fourth fastest time ever run at a state meet in the four-by-four. And the only teams that ran fast was the Chipewa Falls team that beat them, and the team with the current state record, and the team that previously had the current state record. I know they were very disappointed. They worked their butts off to be state champions, and he came up just a little bit short. But they have nothing to be ashamed of. I mean, representing second place with that time was incredible. They also qualified for the national, I think it's the New Balance National Meet in Pennsylvania, but they declined to go to it. But not many times, and Kayden would also qualified for it. So the first time since I've been a coach that we've had anyone run a good enough time to qualify for a national meet. So extremely proud of these young men. They worked really hard, and they represented Janesville in a great way. Thank you for having me.
Sometimes being an athlete requires you to give up a lot of things, and we have two gentlemen with us this evening that unfortunately had to give up the privilege of receiving their diploma at graduation, even though they're two of the fastest young men in the state. They weren't fast enough to get down here on graduation night. So it is my pleasure to present them with their diplomas at this time. So as the principal of Parker High School, it is my pleasure to present this first diploma to Kayden Audie Brandonberg. Next, it's my pleasure to present this diploma to Paul Suk Kim.
Thank you. Congratulations, everybody. Thank you. My name is Ben McCormick. I'm Athletic Director at Janesville Craig High School. Thanks for having us here tonight to recognize our 2024 WI State participants. Before I introduce our coaches and athletes in attendance, I'd like to share a couple of highlights from athletics. At the end of each season, our athletes have a chance to fill out a survey about their experience in athletics. And after reviewing our spring responses, I want to say thank you to our spring coaches. As an overwhelming number of student-athletes shared they had excellent experience, and 98% of them said they would choose to participate again, which is outstanding. In addition, we had, just like Parker, we had a 12% increase in kids participating in spring sports from 274 to 299 compared to last year, and we hope to see that trend continue. We had 15 kids outside of track and field, which you'll hear about tonight, who earned All-Conference honors. And also, we had 29 graduating seniors who plan on playing college athletics next year, which is the highest number by far in my 13 years as Athletic Director, and we wish them the very best. Again, I want to thank you to the school board for having us here tonight to recognize these individuals and the opportunity to compete in educational based athletics. At this time, I'd like to introduce our boys' golf coach, Brent Corey.
Hello. Thank you for having us here. Unfortunately, all of my guys had to work or had their wisdom teeth out today. So I am representing the golf team today. But their accomplishments, I have four seniors and a junior, and their accomplishments have been all varsity players for all four years. Easton Hayworth, Wyatt Marshall, Alex Fallagant was the lone junior, Bryce Sullivan, and Kyle Kristowski. This group was back-to-back undefeated Big Eight champions last year and this year, won regionals and sectionals this year. We set two scoring records for team, and we had two individuals, Easton and Wyatt, both shot 67 in matches at Glen Aaron, which was pretty exciting. Qualified for the state tournament, and we finished fourth overall at our state tournament. So very proud of the boys and the effort that they gave, and they represented Janesville well, Craig and our city. So, thank you. Craig Track, Jeff Dyniger.
Thanks for having us here tonight. It's truly my pleasure to honor these athletes who represented Craig High School at the state track meet. We've had six male individuals and one female. The first one, I'll, and Chloe's not here, Chloe Hedman qualified on her own as an individual in the long jump, where she was second place at conference, second place regional, second place sectionals, and then unfortunately didn't qualify into the finals at the state track meet, but qualified. She had an outstanding season. She was injured most of the season. She, if she, she could be at the state track meet in almost any event she chooses to be there at. So tremendous athlete. Congratulations to her. The next, the boys, there's six boys that we're going to honor. Ben Haye and Quinton Jackson, who are with us right now. Levi Booker, Dylan Tyler, Jack Dostal, and Alex Lawton are the others. We were represented with three events at the state track meet. Individual qualifier, Levi Booker in the 100 meters, and then all of the same six guys were in the relays that were represented by us, four-by-one and four-by-two. We're truly going to miss our seniors on this team next year. They were, our senior representatives were also our team captains. I think their season really came to a highlight at our conference track meet, where both our four-by-one and our four-by-two broke our school records that night, and also the Big Eight Conference meet records that night at that meet. The cool thing was, is the four-by-two record was a 22-year-old record set by Craig High School 22 years previous to that. So they did a, well, that's an awesome job. We figure we go back in time, it's the most significant sprint night in the history of Craig High School that night, four-by-one and four-by-two. They move on, they qualify through their regional champions, sectional champions in the four-by-one, second place in the four-by-two, but also setting another school record that night while doing that. And then we did not qualify for finals in the four-by-one. Four-by-two qualified in the finals and was eighth in the state. So also, four-by-two qualified for nationals too that night that we're at the conference track meet. So I can't say enough about them. I just want to honor them like all of our other track athletes here in the school district of Janesville. Congratulations, guys. Thank you. I would like to, I would like to bring up Dr. Allison Bion, who's going to speak on behalf of some of our seniors.
Yeah, absolutely. Hearing all those accolades, no big surprise that they prioritized track over graduation, right? But I'm really happy that we have this opportunity to honor both of them this evening. It's a real honor for me to be able to hand your diplomas off to you. So without any further ado, I would like to present a Craig High School diploma to Benjamin Thomas Haye. And fellow Craig High School, class of 2024 graduate, Quinton Robert Jackson. Our newest alumni, right?
That was great. Thanks for adding the graduation piece. That was a surprise and pretty emotional, really. And, you know, we have some fabulous, outstanding coaches, assistant coaches, and volunteer coaches, and support from the community and our parents, so hats off to them as well. So let's move on to five point two. Provide administration with direction to deposit all unspent dollars from the fiscal year 2324 to Fund 73 and Fund 46.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. Included in your packet is a memo. It's an annual memo coming from the office relative to year-end contributions to Fund 73, which is the other post-employment benefits trust, as well as Fund 46. Going back to Fund 73, you may recall the district worked and continues to work with Key Benefit Solutions. Key Benefit Solutions is now Foster and Foster, and so there is an annual actuarially determined contribution, ADC, and so we're asking for up to 2.65 million of year-end funds. Please keep in mind, 2.5 million of that is budgeted, so it's not as though we have 2.65, just laying around to apply to our OPEB trust, and then any remaining balance to Fund 46. And again, kudos to the board for in 2015 adopting a Fund 46 Long-Term Capital Maintenance Sinking Fund.
A motion by Commissioner Hurt. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any comments or questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thanks. Okay, so for some reason, I can't get the document back up to ask my question, but just, thank you. So basically, I just want to make sure I understand, we have in our budget, you know, every year, 2.5 million that we intend to put into OPEB, right?
That is correct.
And so we're talking about another 100,000?
150,000.
150,000 that, and, and what, where did this windfall come from?
Yeah, well, 142 million, I'm not sure 150 is a windfall, but it may be to you and I personally, right?
Yeah.
So I'll give you an example. If an individual takes leave of absence and does not have accrued time, right, that's a benefit to the district because there is no compensation paid. So this year, probably between support staff and certified staff, we have approximately $300,000 in unpaid wages, right, because people took, if you will, quote-unquote, "doc pay." So that's an example.
So, and those funds, windfall, and are we, are we limited into how we can use them? Could they go into other things than, other than OPEB?
You could, sure. You know, keep in mind, ideally, as we've gotten better and better in budgeting over time, right, and as we've shared in the past, is trying to really determine the recurring versus non-recurring types of expenditures, right?
Yes.
So if we have a recurring expenditure which isn't necessarily funded, we have an opportunity to invest additional funds into 73 or additional funds into 46.
Okay.
If we move past July 1st and we're still finding some dollars, right, as we begin to settle the books in preparation for the audit, we then have a board policy relative to fund balance, right?
Okay.
The beauty of Fund 73 and Fund 46 is those are aidable expenses, right? Aidable expenses therefore reduce local property taxes on the following year. If we, and again, this is kind of the trick basket relative to fund balance, right? If we throw dollars into fund balance, those become an aidable.
I see.
Our aidable percentage at the tertiary level, right, is approximately 24%. So I like simple math, right? So if we had a million that we put to fund balance, 240,000, we would lose in aid.
I see.
On the subsequent year.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So Mr. McCray, is there, excuse me, any benefit to putting additional 150,000 into Fund 73?
Yeah, so that's a great question. I think, you know, typically, the valuation will be between 2.5 to 3.5 million per year to meet the long-term obligation, right? So we don't necessarily at the full board meeting go through the details of the Fund 73 study that we have every three years. It's also a part of our annual audit. So 2.5 to 3 million to 3.5, again, will vary from year to year depending upon, you know, the actuaries and determining all, you know, where staff are at in terms of preparing for a post-retirement benefit. So 2.5 to 2.65 is probably on the leaner side. In years past, we've been as high as 3.5, right? And in years past, we've been as low as just over a million. Sometimes we are meeting, and sometimes we are not meeting historically our Fund 73 obligation. Our balance right now is approximately 8 million. You can kind of think about, right, we withdraw 1.8 million, and we put 2.5 to 2.65 million, if it's the board's choosing, in every year. So what we put in, in the subsequent year, we take a vast majority of it out.
Thank you. Can you just, for some of us, explain what OPEB is?
Yeah, so OPEB, I think, and I quickly went through it, right, so it's the other post-employment benefit. So you may recall, right, the district has restructured over time. It's post-retirement benefit to both certified and non-certified staff. So currently, it's a three-year benefit, right, that will That will sunset on June 30th, 2025. It will then move to a two-year benefit for another 10 years. And then 10 years beyond that, I believe it moves to a one-year benefit. There's also, if you will, not only health insurance, right? But there is, if you have accrued sick time in your bank one, right? That would be a, up to currently in its structure, a 403B payout.
Anyone else? There's a motion on the floor, and there's a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, nine to zero. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Great questions.
5.3, Discussion of a Board Request Regarding the District Drug Intervention Program.
Yeah, so Kim and I have had some conversations specifically about a board request to really look at our practices in regarding trying to make sure that we have potential drug overdose medication available in the district. And so I think that Commissioner Naumehausen made a request, and so this would be probably the opportunity to give the administration some direction and have some conversations about what it might look like if we had Narcan in schools. And at this time, we don't have Narcan in schools, and Kim and I would need a little bit of time in order to prepare that proposal. But I think that's just the conversation to make sure that the board is interested in that and would want us to take that direction. So I think that's where we're at tonight.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Carl.
I did bring it up, and I appreciate it being brought up here. It kind of brings to me, we do some of this in the middle schools and the high school, correct? High schools? We do have Narcan, we do have that available.
We, our police ladies and officers have it available, but we do not have it as a school district.
Let, Carl, let's have Kim Perrinbaum just discuss a little bit what's currently happening, and then we'll get back to you, Carl.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
So currently, all of the school resource officers at the middle school and high school carry Narcan on them, as well as all emergency vehicles, law enforcement vehicles, et cetera, within the city parameters. So if there were an event and we were to call 911, they would arrive on scene with Narcan on them. Our elementaries do not have Narcan in them. However, we have access to a school resource officer and/or the ability to call 911 after a medical emergency response team would go to the scene and evaluate what is going on with that situation.
I appreciate that. We haven't been not doing something. My concern becomes, we have nothing in the elementary. And based on some of the things I'm reading lately, in fact, just a couple days ago, that in southern Wisconsin, opiate overdoses and usage is increasing over the past few years. And I'm concerned about children in their home finding this, bringing it to school. It's kind of, young kids, it's kind of cute to be a show-off on variety of things, which may not be tasteful, but happen. It's just, it's a reality what could happen. I know of nothing that has happened so far to affect our elementary schools. I'm not sure what has happened in the others' schools. But I know one thing, time is of the essence when a child stops breathing. Any person does stops breathing. And Madison has just passed a thing that they're going to make it available in all schools. And training is very simple. I've done some research. People can be trained within a couple of minutes on how to use it. Other schools around the country, about a third of them now, school districts require it all, all their schools. And it's growing, the number. There are some that don't want it, and there are some, as I talked to several retired police chiefs. They find it, especially at the high school, an incentive for a child, well, I'll take this at school, show off, and they've got Narcan, so I'll be okay. I don't think that really happens. I don't think a child endangers themselves purposely, other than they've got other problems. But I'd like to see us work on this. It is an expensive thing to do, and I don't think that's what the district has looked at as the money part of it, as a negative. But we also could raise the money with volunteers. In other words, I think a kit actually is less than, I think it's less than $50, and it's usually has two doses in it. And that, so if one does, and so all of a sudden there's somebody else, they have it. The time is of the essence, and I'd like to have us look into doing this. I know one thing, my wife and I would volunteer to buy one of these kits or two of them for a school and have them, and that, and I think other people would do that, too. So I just want to see more research put into it and some action because if a child dies, that's too late. We've got to do it, be proactive. Thank you.
Thanks, Carl. I'll just give you my, I, I support us doing something with Narcan in the district. I guess I'm looking at it more holistically, like, these are public buildings, and we have many public events going on in these buildings. People using our spaces frequently. I happen to have a little of experience administering Narcan. It has a very short half-life, which means you can administer it. It does its work and then it goes away. Now, that's been a while, so things can have changed a little. But typically what I see happening in the public is if there's an AED with its, in its container, there's also Narcan in there. In the, in the, where the AED is kept.
Not in our district.
I'm not saying in it. I'm just saying typically, that's how it's been done. And also I've learned, and if we give the direction to administration, they'll navigate through all these things that. We have two healthcare providers in this town that have willingly, to other entities, supplied the Narcan. So we all know about fentanyl and its use. It can affect anyone, anywhere, anytime. And again, I'm restating myself, these are large public buildings we use. And to have it available readily, I think, is a preventive measure that could, could save a life. So I'm in favor of directing administration to come up with a plan to have Narcan at all our buildings.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think what we'll do is we'll do some, we've had some conversations. We'll do a little research about how to get it in the buildings, how we might train people, what that looks like. And we'll bring that back to the board, and we'll have a conversation about if we need to do any more board action or paperwork. I'm not exactly sure in that realm. So we'll have to talk a little bit about that. Do we need a policy, or can we just move forward? But we'll take action and, and work on that this summer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, where am I? Where am I?
5.4.
Okay.
You're welcome.
I was just checking to see if you were paying attention.
I know, you're looking to pay attention. You're not paying attention. Don't worry, Kevin.
Alright. Presentation of the community survey results.
Where do you want us? Oh, I was afraid to do that.
Come on down.
Alright. There, oh wow, look at that. Okay, now I can hear myself. It's good to see you all again. Scott Gerard, project manager with School Perceptions, here with my colleague, Rob Demese, School Perceptions. So we are here to present your survey results. A little key for some of the information we're going to go through tonight. Background info is mostly just repetition of what was on your survey. Then we'll go through the survey and respondent information, some results and analysis, and a little wrap-up at the end. Little reminder about us and our background. We've been doing these types of surveys since 2002 and helped more than 900 districts navigate referendum planning process. And then the fun stuff, so we get to your survey information. So we had a May 20th deadline. We ended up with a little over 3,200 respondents to the survey, and that leads us to a 1.75% margin of error. Good age distribution. We really like to see a lot of representation of that top group because they're reliable voters. They're going to be there in November. And so hearing what they're going to say is really important to having good results here. Primary residents in the district, nine tenths of the respondents will be able to vote in November. The rest, there's 8% that are probably staff, open enrollment, who might live outside of the district. Still really important to understand where they land on these things. But when we're calculating what happens in November, we're really focused on that 91% who will be able to vote. Not sure about the not sure 1% there, but every survey is 1% to 2%, so. Mostly city of Janesville represented, but we did have some representation from all the municipalities that were on the survey. Good representation of staff, parents, and non-parents, non-staff. And that last group, the non-parent, non-staff group, they're the largest in your population and often have the least direct connection to the school. So hearing from that group in a significant way is really great to see. We also did ask on your survey, do you have grandchildren's in a school? And we had 16% of the respondents were grandparents. So we ask how folks like to receive school and district information. And we break it down here by those non-parents, non-staff groups, and then the parents. As you can see, non-parents, non-staff appreciate the Gazette and newsletters. And then your parents really like your emails. So whatever emails you're writing to your parents, keep writing them because they like them. So now we get to the operational side. So this is just a reminder of the question that was, or the information that was shared with folks before we asked them the question about the operational referendum. Explaining the operational funding challenges. And now what we have on these next three slides are we break it into subgroups. So we've got staff residents. On this slide, we'll get to parents and then non-parents, non-staff. So as you can see here, your staff residents, 85% said they would say yes to that operational referendum question. Just 5% no and 10% undecided. So not many folks, not sure what they would do there, and a lot of support among your staff. Parents, similarly, you had about three-quarters responding yes, 9% undecided, and 16% no. I think on both of those slides, it's really good to see the low undecideds there. A lot of times people just don't know, and we see those in the teens. So folks understood the plan and why you're asking and had an opinion on it. And then your non-parents, non-staff, 57% in that definitely yes and probably yes camp. So still solidly over that 50% majority. And so what we do with those groups then is we weight them based on your population for who's likely to vote in November based on your population. So what that ends up being is about 25% are going to be those parents, and about 75% are going to be those non-parents, non-staff. Your staff residents are a very small proportion, so we don't factor them into this weighted formula. But having that 85% support you saw is still very important. But when we use this weighted formula, we take that 25%, multiply it by the support your parent groups had, take the 75%, multiply it by the support your non-parent, non-staff groups had, and what that comes out to is 61.3%. So that's if the election were held today, that's what we would predict. We would predict a successful referendum for the operating.
We do have some time allotted for questions at the end as well. What did you say? Down is up? And, I don't know, it doesn't work. So back to the blue slides. Again, we'll go through these and spend the least amount of time on them because they are exactly what was in your survey. So just as a reminder, we obviously didn't have a lot of pages to work with, so we tried to summarize this in as few words as possible, noting where people could find more information on your website. So this is one chunk of them, the year built for each of your facilities, how much potential money could go in, divided up between the buildings and grounds and the academic spaces. But obviously you weren't pursuing all of that at one time. So then it broke out to what the base plan investment would be for a potential referendum at this time. Again, the definitions for those, this also appeared on that page. And then specifically highlighting what this would cost taxpayers, should I decide as a survey respondent to say yes to this? So just as a reminder, when we were with you last time, we wanted to note what the operational referendum would cost. It would not increase the property tax mill rate based on your financial assessment or estimates, but the facilities would. The blessing and the curse here is that nobody thinks in terms of a mill rate, ever. So we have to translate that into, well, based on how much property I own then, what is this going to cost me should I decide to say yes? So that was the purpose of this slide here, is that's all well and good, but how much is this going to cost me? How much money will leave my wallet should I decide to support it? Same idea here. So the question read, would you support a $169.5 million referendum to pay for the base plan as it was described in the survey? Little over seven, little over seven in 10 of your staff residents said yes, 10% said no. Parents, a little over six in 10. 63% said yes, just under one-quarter of your parent residents said no. And then finally, as Scott said, the largest chunk of your community. They took a little step down here, in terms of 42% of that group would be supportive. 44% said no, 14% were undecided. I do want to echo what Scott said here, in terms of your undecideds. I don't blink an eye to this number, by the way. And I wouldn't have blinked an eye had your non-parent, non-staff undecided been in the upper teens. That is very normal. So the blessing and the curse of this data, once again, is that people have seemed to make up their minds. And that's not a bad place to be in because you're getting good, clear data then on what people are thinking. So it's not bad to have that undecideds below here, but bear in mind then that there are fewer people that will change their minds between now and November 5th. So same logic here. So same numbers, same questions, same analysis. But once again, we are weighting that support based on how big each of these groups are. So just as Scott said, when we complete this equation, what this is telling us is if you as a board decided to take this ballot today, 47.3% of the community would support it, which is obviously below the 50% plus one that a community would need to see a referendum pass. I'm going to go way back. You don't have to flip with me. You can stay on the screen because I'm going to come back to that slide. But I want to go way back to the beginning and get to this. So what I have up here, I think you see, yeah, the margin of error is 1.75%. So it's pesky, could be plus, could be minus. And that, that is not a function of you or the survey. That's just, that's a function of the size of your community and how many respondents you have in your pool to get. So bear in mind, the, the margin of error is 1.75. So if we take that into account, going back to that slide I left off on, it does remain outside the margin of error as well. So you're looking at about 49% up at the tip-top, but it could be as low as the, as the upper 45s, depending on which way that margin of error broke. And we'll come back to this. But there were a few other bits of your survey that I want to cover before we summarize what we learned for you. There were some additional projects beyond the operational referendum and the base facility plan. Two specifically. It was that CTE, which had an estimated cost of up to 32 million at this time. And then the elementary classroom updates at up to 36 million. The scale that I want to keep in the back of your mind is up in the upper right of that screen there. So behind the scenes, it was weighted as 321. So if I said, yep, this is a high priority for me, it was weighted as a 3.00. And the definition of that was, yep, you do this right now. Include this on a next referendum that you are planning for. If I said something was medium, it was a 2.00, which is, I get it. Alright, I understand the importance, but I don't want you to do it right now. That is a future thing. And if I said something's a low priority for me, both of those things were true. Not right now, this is not something I want you to pursue. That was a 1.00. So when I look at this data, what I'm about to pull up is I use that 2.00, the median of the scale, as the first thing I eyeball. And I look and see which projects are above or below 2, because that will tell me, is this something that people agree with and they want us to pursue at the moment? Or is it below? Or is it below two and this is something that people might get, but it's a not right now kind of thing? Your data is pretty predictable in terms of what we see. You are, you are not different than just about anybody else we test here. Career and technical education, those shop type courses always test well. So you are north of 2.00 here at 2.18. So people are saying, yep, I get it. That is something that people are valuing, that is leaning towards, I not only get it, but I'd want you to pursue this sooner rather than later. Elementary classroom updates, you're in the business, so to speak, of education. That also tests well. Anything related to where kids learn and where teachers are teaching tests pretty well. It's north of two at 2.08. Another area where you're very much like everybody else, athletics always tests lower than more of these classroom updates. So you are below two here, which means that people are saying, this is not necessarily a priority for me at this time at a score of 1.83. And I always liken this to things that I have to do in my own house. There's all kinds of priorities I have, whether it's replacing my floor or getting new windows, getting a new roof. All these things are priorities for me, but not everything can be a priority if I don't have the money to pay for it. So it's not saying, people aren't saying no forever, but they're saying, I have to make my decision, not necessarily off of whether I love these things, but I have to make a decision on what I can afford. And that's where the next part of your survey needed to go is you may love him, you may hate him, but how much money again are you willing to see leave your wallet to pay for these projects that are tested? Before we get there, we had one extra question about your athletics. And that was a direction, kind of a future planning for you is if we are going to spend money on these places, where do you want us to invest in? Is it where we are currently at, at Monterey Stadium? And do we focus on updating that facility? Or do we begin the process of building multi-use facilities at each high school? Fairly similar in cost, 23 to 26 million, or that 26 divided by two for Barker and Craig. The question read, where should the district make future facility investments? The good news here is you do have direction. No matter if it's staff, parents, or non-parents, non-staff, it may not have crossed majority for each, but at least a plurality of each are saying, yep, it makes sense to pursue something at the high schools and not to continue putting money in the Monterey Stadium piece. So just eyeballing that, you can see that all three subgroups, their bars are higher in the middle than they are on the far left-hand side. The not sure, non-parents, non-staff, I did poke around a little bit of the qualitative data. There's some tradition there, there's some nostalgia, I think, and in terms of what's going to happen in the future. That's where a little bit of that stemmed from. But my takeaway, my lesson here is no matter what, one of the three subgroups we looked at, there was a preference for the high school sites as opposed to the Monterey site. Then it was the funding support. So this went as low as 169.5 because that was your base plan. So those were your identified needs. And then up to 250 million, which was basically the, if we were to do everything in this survey at right now, not everything in the facility plan, but if we were to do everything in this survey right now at 250 million, and then how much money would that cost me per $100,000 of property value I have to make that multiplication as easy as we possibly could? So nothing new on the far left. That was the exact same tax impact that we saw before, but up to $178 per 100K should I decide to support 250 million. And then we get to a chart that looks like this. It looks messier than it actually is. So what I want to do is begin in the top row, because that's the biggest chunk of your community. You've heard Scott and I say a couple of times now that 75% of your community is in that upper, upper row, that non-parents, non-staff. So what this is telling us is if you were to put a $250 million, $250 million question on the ballot, about 12% of the largest chunk of your community would support it. So that we can rule out at the moment. But the logic is then, how low do I need to go until you cross a 50% threshold? So when I do this, if I take 12, and I take two, and I take 11, and I take nine, and I take 12, basically I'm seeing how, you know, where do I cross that bar that goes down the middle? The good news here is you're getting data that agrees with itself that you just saw for the base plan. So that biggest chunk of your community, they're saying, yeah, I get it. And I, while I'm supportive of a referendum, it needs to be smaller than the base plan, which is exactly what you saw earlier on when you saw you were just short of 50%. That's the same thing this, this slide is telling you here, where 250 isn't going to work, 225 million isn't going to work, so on down the line. But you do cross a threshold for the largest chunk of your community when you, supportive of something that's smaller than what you tested in the base plan. Your parents are a little bit more supportive, as are your staff, but remember there are fewer of them that make up the bulk of the, of the proportion of voters. So your parents come in, if I discount four greens down, four levels down, I'm at 175 million. Your staff are just on the tail end of three levels down at 200 million. So what I want to take away here is what you heard early on with your facilities plan is the exact same data you're getting here. You're very close at the base, at the base plan amount, but it needs to be something slightly cheaper than that if it's going to be 50% plus one. Again, I will summarize that in just a moment, but I do want to finish up the other bits and pieces of your survey here. These overall satisfaction questions. So this read, how is the district doing in each of the following areas from a scale of one to four? So perfect score A+ is 4.00. The lowest score is 1.00. So you got to be somewhere between one and four. So much like earlier on, when I just eyeball this data for the first time, I want to look and see what's above or below two and a half, 2.50. No matter how we looked at the subgroups for item number one, delivering a high quality education, everybody was north of 2.50. That's great. So you're leaning towards the great and the good there as opposed to being fair or poor. Obviously, the higher the number, the better, and that's exactly where you want to be in terms of educating kids. Keeping the public informed, your staff and parents are both north of 2.50. Your non-parents, non-staff are just a little bit below. I'm not surprised by that. That's also very something that's common in districts, just because they don't have kids enrolled by definition. They are not a parent and they don't work here. It's just a harder group to, to reach. But based on what Scott said earlier on in the presentation, you now have data directly from them that says, this is how we want you to talk to us. So oftentimes what will happen is if we do a survey for you again in the future, or any district for that matter, whatever this is now oftentimes tends to go up because now you have a very clear indication of how people want to hear from you and you can tailor your communications to match that. So the next time around, that number often goes up because you can do that tailoring. Managing funds appropriately, you're slightly above 2.5 for your staff, just below for parents, and a 2.18 for non-parents, non-staff. Again, I don't want to bang the drum of being like everybody else here, but let me bang the drum a little bit. That is not uncommon as well, because in our referendum surveys, people will say, well, you must not be managing your funds well as a board if you have a referendum. If you were managing your funds well, you wouldn't need a referendum. Because people don't know, people don't know in terms of tertiary aid or how often referendums occur. You know, how often they've been on ballots over the last 30 years, whether it's municipalities or school districts or any kind of government entity in Wisconsin, people just don't know. And why would they? They're not paid to think about this every day. So when we do surveys, community surveys that ask these questions that have nothing to do about property taxes, that number's always higher. Because whenever you talk about property taxes, people think, well, you wouldn't need it if you were managing funds well. But obviously, if you had to spare $169.5 million in your budget, you went to fire dust to begin with. And then building pride in the community, very near the middle. So staff are definitely leaning towards great or good. And then right smack dab at the median for your parents or your non-parents, non-staff. Different way to look at that, same question, same scale. We just roped all of the respondents together here. So what percentage of all of your respondents said you were doing a great or a good job at any of those four same metrics? And then what is the overall score when we're not breaking it up into subgroups? Three are north of majority, same kind of message here, just below majority for managing funds appropriately. There are three, or two rather, that are above two and a half, which are delivering a high quality education and building pride in the community. One that's right smack dab in the middle at keeping the public informed. And then a 2.30 for again, managing funds appropriately. The final question then, it read, on a scale of zero to 10, how likely would you be to recommend the district to a friend or family member? A couple of different ways that I look at this. First one is just where do you land? You know, between zero and 10, are you north or south of five? Five is neutrality. So your average is 5.91. That is the side of the fence that you, that you need to be on. So people are definitely more likely to recommend you than they are not. Second way to look at it is simply by eyeballing it. You certainly have more greens than you do reds, that's a good thing. The third way I like to look at it is just by doing some simple math from top to bottom. So I do my 10s, my 9s, and my 8s. So if I have my nine and my seven, that's 16, add another 17, I'm at one-third exactly. The reason I do that is the research behind this question suggests that anybody that gives themselves an eight, a nine, or a 10 will serve as ambassadors on your behalf, which means that they will go out and talk well about what the school district of Janesville is doing without you having to do anything about it. They will strike up that conversation on their own. You don't have to motivate them to do so. So they will stop somebody at the state track meet, they will stop somebody in the concession stand for a softball tournament, what have you. And they will say, hey, X, Y, and Z good thing is happening in the school district of Janesville, you should check it out. So one-third of your survey takers are in that camp, and I don't want to minimize that. You have another 12 and seven, so what is it, 19? Let me do my math, is that 52%? So you just breached majority, over half of your resident respondents gave you a score above neutral. By the way, if you want to know why we don't put neutral on our surveys, the answer is right here. Because as soon as people see a neutral, that's what they choose. The reason I spent so much time on those last few slides, even though they don't have necessarily something to do with a referendum or not, this slide especially. If I'm not happy with what's going on, it's very difficult for me to say yes on a referendum question. You know, if I don't feel like you're communicating with me well, or if I don't feel like I have a positive association with the district, like this slide is telling you here that people do. Most people say, well, I'm really mad, but I am going to raise my taxes. People just don't think like that, right? They have to have some semblance of satisfaction before they're willing to say yes on a referendum. And so I do spend time here to say that there are some hurdles that you have to clear before you ever put something on the ballot. And I'm really happy to see that there's a majority that are six or above. Because as you can imagine, over the last four or five years of my life, it's not always that common that I stand up in front of a board and say, the majority of people are willing to recommend you. So that is a place to celebrate, and I don't want to minimize that. Despite your, your survey focusing on other things, I do want to give the thumbs up where it's due. So two things, what did we learn? As you heard from Scott, the $14.5 million operational referendum would likely be supported, supported by voters if the election were held today. Two, the $169.5 million capital referendum would not likely be supported if the election were held today. So what do you do? Based on the amount of weighted support, so based on your margin of error, based on, not a lot, but the undecideds that are left, you could consider a capital resolution for November at amount that's less than the base plan. Because bear in mind, in general, support for a referendum will increase as the total cost and that accompanying tax impact decreases. So I guess some here, supportive, what do you do about the capital? I guess to restate, I, I think you have support to do something. And I know that's where the question is going to go next. It's just the, the what do we do? You know, do you decide on a tax impact and try to back into a plan? What is that cost going to be? Is it 160, is it 150, is it 168.5? I mean, that's the next question is what is that number actually going to be and how much will that cost people? But that's where we're going next. You know, sometimes we do talk about number of questions on a ballot. If you do move forward, bear in mind that you get two questions per calendar year. So one of them will be, I assume, for your operational, which means that everything else that you would need to do related to your capital work would need to be encapsulated into one question. That's it for us. So by all means, if you have questions for Scott and I, be happy to answer them for you.
Anyone?
Go ahead, Kathy.
So thank you. So getting back to the, I guess, is there any indication in the data for how much less we should go?
If it is in there, it would have to come from your qualitative data, which we haven't dug into deeply yet. We just hot off the presses, I think, sent that, sent some qualitative information over earlier this week. That will give some indication on what projects to remove, but not quantitatively. And we did do that on purpose as a survey strategy. You get fewer respondents when people have to pick out, I want to do this, but I don't want to do this, and I like this. People, one of two things happened. Either the survey gets too long and they're like, oh my God, this is homework, and they throw it away. Or they're like, I don't know, I don't know what your boilers are like at this school. You tell me, you give me a plan, I'll tell you whether I like it or not. So in that case, I think you had the right survey strategy because you would have had fewer respondents had you won something else. But the short answer to the question is, it might be in the qualitative data, but quantitatively, we know it's less than 169.5. We don't know to what extent it is lower than that. You know, is it, we don't, we don't have a magic number for you below 169.5.
It feels like this is a little, because, because the, the question that was, or the information that was provided, I think, from the, the slide that gave, or, I'm sorry, there it is. The slide that shows how much work needs to be done on the capital. And I can't find it right now, just saw it a second ago.
I think it's the guy that you have.
There it is, that's the one, yes, okay. So I mean, one of the reasons for that plan and for dispersing all that money throughout is because we got some guidance earlier that most people, if I remember right, wanted us to work on all buildings. And so does this contradict the information that we got before? Do people have, are like, do people like, wait a minute, no, I guess I didn't mean that? Or what, what are your thoughts?
Does it contradict the, let me, let me restate your question to make sure I understand. Are you saying, does it contradict the idea that people want us to work on all buildings as opposed to some of them? My gut check is I don't think that to be true. I think there were some confusions in, for some of these buildings that are newer. How did you get to the number that's here or why is it as? I think there was some like, why is it as big as I thought it was going to be if these buildings are a little bit newer? I still think that everybody wants to see their neighborhood school fixed up. You know, the one that's across the street from me, got a lot of heart for that one. But unfortunately, everybody thinks about that when they all have a school in their neighborhood. So I, I think it's a wise plan. We see the most support for plans that touch a lot of buildings so that everybody has a stake in it in some way. So I don't think, when you take out your red pen, it's to necessarily say, X school, no, but this school, yes. Unfortunately, it's a much harder exercise is how are we going to slightly reduce something at many of these buildings or facilities? But we do see support, what everybody gets a little bit of the top.
One last question. And so we, in, on that slide there, it is broken down. Oh, I was going to say it's broken down to academic spaces versus building and grounds. But it's, we don't have any indication as to what, well, we got some indication as to what people preferred, I think, earlier to, right? As far as, in earlier surveys, am I right?
Oh, I'm not sure about those. This was the only one we did for you.
Okay.
So that could be, but it just wouldn't have been through.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. So how did we do? 3,273, is that typical, is it not? Is it reliable?
Yeah, it's, so it's kind of like the Pew theory, you know, where Pew can survey a couple of hundred folks across the country and still have a pretty good indication of what's going on. Same kind of principle here. Once you got to about 400 to 500 of your non-parents, non-staff, we kind of keep an eye on it and the data really quieted down. It basically stayed the same over the last week or so of your survey. It fluctuated a little bit at the end when we processed some paper surveys, but you're well beyond what I would feel confident in. I would celebrate 3,200. It was around 10%, which is also very common for a community your size. You know, when we get in, we did a survey in Drummond recently, you know, they have about 200 year-round residents. So a couple of people took it, I think, on parent-teacher conferences and tripled their response rate. So that, that's, if they would have had a 10% response rate, that'd be a little scary. But north of 3,000, that, that is something to celebrate. However, you got the message out about this thing coming, I have no concern about the reliability or validity of the data. So that's a long way of saying, no, I'm not concerned.
Thank you. I have one more question. And I don't know if it's my math, my math skills, or I'm just lazy, or both. But the theme was we, we segregated three groups.
Yeah.
Right? So why weren't we showing the results in its, of all 3,273 without any segregation at all?
I find it to be misleading. I find it to be misleading.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, so you could put all residents together. What we found, though, is, it's confusing for, well, it's confusing and I find it to be misleading. So what you would see is that over-represents staff and parents who are more supportive of your plans than your non-parents, non-staff. And I don't want to inflate how big they are in the community just based on how much the proportion they make up in the broader school district of Janesville. So it, it, what it would've said is, four slides before that weighted analysis, it would've said something like, you know, the, the proportion of all residents who say yes would've been north of fifty percent. And then four slides later, I would've said, support is below fifty percent, which would've been nonsensical. Because the first thing out of my mouth is I would've said, a majority of your resident respondents say yes. And then the next thing I would've said is, but, that's over-inflating groups of people that are smaller in the community. So I would've immediately contradicted myself and said, but we have to break that apart because not all those groups are the same size. So even though your staff was represented on a bar that was the same width, I really wanna know what they think because they're so influential, but there's just not that many of them. So if we would've included them, which we have to in a survey because we absolutely wanna know what they think because of their influence, we wanna know, but we can't include them with the same weight because there's just not the same number of them. So when we do our research through the American Community Survey and find out just how many parents you have and taking into account private schools and things like that, that gives us a much more accurate and better painted picture of whether this thing would be supported as opposed to putting all residents together. Uh, we've had districts do that, um, as recently as this past spring, and they advertised, here's all residents that were gonna go out. And, and their number was something like sixty percent of all residents. And people said, whoo, I don't even need to vote, this thing's a shoe-in. And that's the number they plastered everywhere. What they ignored was four slides later when we said, not all those groups are the same size and you're around fifty percent. They did no preparation and the referendum failed because people sat on their heels and said, if we don't do anything, this thing's gonna pass. So I would've given you incorrect information. I would've told you that you had much more support than what you actually would've had.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm?
Anyone else? So for the board, our next steps will be to study, but, you know, just kinda reading the room, it sounds like, and because of results, will be, probably be prepared to move forward with an operational question. Uh, okay. Right? I guess, probably, we'll, we'll have to make that decision next meeting. It's, the work will be, and the challenge will be discussion on the capital piece. So my question is, um, somebody might have to guide me with next steps. I, I'm assuming, based on the data, that administration will come with a proposal? Or are we gonna have the nine of us move the sliding scale up and down, or maybe nowhere? Could you, thank you.
So here's what, again, I think we, we have some time. Um, so kudos to the board for saying, we've got a second board meeting in June, so we can take some time to kinda look at this and think about this. So, uh, we met last week, I don't know, Wednesday was it, Thursday? Wednesday or Thursday, um, with our core team. So we've been thinking about it for the last week about, well, what might this look like? And, um, we have, Dan has a meeting, uh, with some key folks tomorrow morning. Um, and what I would tell you is that we would prepare, we would be prepared at the next meeting to, um, shave down some of the one sixty-nine. And then give you some rationale as to what we did and why we did it. And then listen to what your thoughts would be about, yep, I think that's the direction we wanna go, or I'm not comfortable, we'll have to wait till July to make that decision. Um, we've got a little bit of time on our hands, I think we're okay with that. Um, I think, and I don't wanna speak for school perceptions, appreciate the work they do. I think what they're saying and what I heard is, yes, the operational, um, it's sixty percent, which is pretty made, got work to do, need to te, tell people the why. Not yet to the capital. And the not yet, um, has a lot of phases. Sometimes the dollar two, um, has some pieces and say, well, what might that look like if we made a few changes and it was less than a dollar? Okay, so then, there's, there's some components to that. Are there a few things that we can, um, internally, uh, make some decisions on, bring that back to the board? Um, and then, I don't have a, you know, a dollar amount, but we'll say, okay, what, what if it's, and we'll pick a number. It's less than one sixty-nine, we think that that's the number, what do you think? And again, there isn't any app, we won't have a no, or, uh, we won't know for sure until we go to November, or don't, um, to say if it's gonna work, um, because we asked for the base plan. What I would also reiterate is that we have to make sure, in either way, we've identified a hundred and seventy-eight million dollars in need. We reduced that to a hundred and sixty-nine. So now we're gonna, because what the public said, we're gonna reduce it a little bit more. That doesn't mean the needs go away, right? It means that we're just gonna pay, push them off the phase two, uh, because we have four hundred million dollars in the base plan of which we're not identifying. Um, so we're gonna have to be cautious about that. We don't wanna go, uh, and carve into it. But I think we have what's right. We're just a little bit off, right? That we've gotta get to fifty-something to feel comfortable with where we are. And we can do that in the next, uh, week or so. Give you that information a little bit ahead of the board packet, um, which, I guess it's next Friday, isn't it?
Thursday.
Next Thursday, as soon as we can, right? We'll get you that information as what we're thinking about and give you some time the following Tuesday to think about it. And if you need more time, then we'll wait to our July board meeting to make a final decision. Um, and really what we're looking for from the administration is the board to give us direction to write the question, not actually to vote on it. So then we would go back, there's some attorney pieces that we need to do to write the question, and then, you know, potentially in July, the board could vote on either yes, we're gonna move forward with the operational, or no, we're not doing any capital, or we're gonna do capital less, a little bit less. So we, we definitely could do that and give you some information to consider at the next meeting.
So this is strictly informational. We couldn't say, go make the question for operational budget tonight because it's not on the agenda. Is that correct?
Well, what you'd be doing is giving us direction. Um, I, looking in at our business manager, saying, do we need action? I don't think we need action because the board is actually gonna vote on the question. Right? Do you see what I mean? Like, you're gonna vote on the question. There isn't anything that needs necessarily action. You're, we're just looking for some direction.
I appreciate the fact that you're gonna provide us before the June twenty-fifth school board meeting, some of the information. However, I would encourage all of you, we already have all the information. I mean, they're gonna do a little bit more digging and research, but I'm, I'm appreciative of all the work that's already been done. I mean, I remember binders that I still have at home with the long-range facilities planning and the pie charts from J.P. Cullen and the, yeah, see? I have all that. So, um, I think you'll just take a deeper dive into what those most pressing needs are to maybe come up with a number that's less than one sixty-nine. So I appreciate that you're gonna give us information on, on the why and the rationale, but we as board members all have that information and can take a look at that prior to anything that the administration sends out to us so that we can be very thoughtful and prepared for June twenty-fifth.
Let's move on to the Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Committee report.
Felt like we just went through it. There are a few items to highlight from our committee meeting. Excuse me. Um, so as we go back to our 2020 referendum and the ESAR work and the use of Fund Forty-Six, the ESAR funds have to be spent by September one. So we're rapidly completing as, well, not as much, the usage of those funds at Franklin, um, and the high schools, with the, um, greenhouses. Fund Forty-Six, which, one of the questions I was asking, or I asked Mr. McCray, the benefits of seventy, or Fund Seventy-Three, really kinda versus Fund Forty-Six, because we instantly see the usage of Fund Forty-Six. And Seventy-Three is, you know, it's some future board members, maybe Kevin will still be around. But, you know, it's a future view versus what we can do right now. So as we look at, you know, Fund Forty-Six really being, finishing, not finishing, taking the next level of the work, uh, with Windows at Edison, that will be wrapping up. And one of the, I think, one of the key things, and it'll be important, as we, whatever we decide to do, to highlight, if nothing else for us, as we get into the school year, to visit the facilities and the work that has been done. So we, number one, understand what has been done. And I say that because that goes into the investment we've had over the last ten, eleven years, probably twelve years. But at one point, well, I'll say, before I was on the board, and this isn't Greg, but before I was on the board, there was no money specified and dedicated to any capital improvement. It was only by, here's what happened, and we go take care of it. There were certain things, capital maintenance, I know better. Um, there were some items that were taken care of because we had to, but there was no view to say, here's what we need to make sure to keep things even where we're at. So over that period of time, we've spent, uh, where are we at? About, well, a million to a million two every year, twelve million dollars. So it may be a perception that we are fiscally very responsible, we've been working at this, but there's only so much you can do within the focus of the budget that we have. So I think it is awesome when we look at what we've been able to do and the items we focused on. I believe last committee, we talked about the energy usage and that impact. So there are many things that tell a great story, and we have to make sure that we all understand that story to tell. All right, enough of this capital stuff. Um, budget development underway. I think one of the items, and I'll thank Commissioner Myers for keeping this, well, not in the forefront, but she asked years ago about gender equity among administrators. And just keeping an eye on that to make sure that, that we don't, we don't have any biases based on gender, because we know that that's prevalent, and we don't continue to contribute to that. So, and that really ends my report, but if there's any thoughts or considerations that you really would like for us to dig into, please do so. Our next meeting, I'll let Denise say what our next meeting is. Um, but we're always looking, I mean, Dan and I, we look to say, what have we done? What do we need to do? So there's an educational bank that we probably should call something different of previous meetings, but then as we dig into more things to just, where, where we, where do we need to be? So let me know, and we can start working on it. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Okay, let's move on to number seven. Personnel Policy and Curriculum and Healthcare Committee report.
Thank you. Our June PPC meeting was held Monday, June third. We started off the meeting with a thorough presentation on the school district of Janesville's early literacy programming with Carrie Heidenreich, where we heard an update on the early literacy program, learned about new programs, partnerships, and also discussed the connection to science of reading. The Janesville Early Literacy Initiative is committed to engaging the entire community in preparing all children from birth to kindergarten to succeed in school and life by empowering families to read, talk, and play together. The idea is that some students arrive at school already substantially behind, and this initiative has been working to close that early education gap that already exists. One aspect of the program is the Read, Talk, Play kits that have been distributed to new parents at the hospital setting. It was really interesting to hear about, um, Carrie and going to tour and how each hospital within our community distributes the, these kits differently. Um, in addition, oh, so at, at, um, also at local community events in 2023, one thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine books were distributed, which is a lot. A partnership has also been formed with HealthNet with books being distributed through the Seal a Smile Program located in local elementary schools. Six thousand six hundred and ninety-nine books were distributed in the 2022, 2023 school year. At HealthNet Dental Program, which began in May 2023, um, two hundred and forty bookbags were distributed to children birth to twelve years old. There's also a partnership with The Basics, which is a new text messaging educational platform that directly reaches, engages with parents of young children for social, emotional learning, movement, play, and reading strategies. There's so much more to share about Carrie's presentation about early literacy initiatives through the school district of Janesville and our community, but I invite you to take a look at that meeting that was posted on the district's website from our June meeting to learn more, because there's a lot, and this was only a small portion of what she presented. And we have other things to talk about, so I need to move us forward. Um, but it's really exciting, the work that we're doing, and I think that it's fantastic to see the school district of Janesville is looking at education outside the walls of just K-12. We're doing more, and that's something to celebrate. Following appropriately after the early literacy initiative discussion, we heard from Dr. DeGraff on an update on Act Twenty. Act Twenty provides a comprehensive update to literacy instruction in the state and is designed to help improve reading and literacy outcomes for students K-12. This is an incredibly complex subject, and I'd like you to, I'd like to invite you to watch that presentation as well, to learn about the components that science-based early reading instruction must include. We were updated on a lot of things, um, like this, about this new literacy legislation, as well as the newly constructed State Council for Early Literacy. There are some challenges that districts are facing with new curriculum requirements, and also will include summer school programs eventually. Um, it is exciting to note that our school district has been ahead in our planning, making adjustments prior to these state requirements, including teacher training, curriculum adjustments, et cetera. We learned that SDJ will test summer programming for, um, reading initiatives this summer to get a better feel for what works best here before they required at the state level. One thing to note, um, going forward, our students who score below the twenty-fifth percentile on reading readiness screeners that the district will be administering, those students will now have a personal reading plan created to help address areas of need, create goals, monitor progress forward, communicate with families, and these will be, as they will be required by the state of Wisconsin. It's important to note that SDJ has taken action by implementing cohesive training for K-five teachers to receive AIM training, to train teachers on science of reading methods, something that most teachers have not been trained at through their teacher training programs when they are coming to us or, um, just in their past. There are three summer cohorts of this training that are currently taking place, and we have already completed three cohorts with over one hundred and eighty elementary teachers in our district who have now completed this training. While training will be required at the state level for teachers K-three, we feel that it's very important here to train all of our elementary teachers on this important reading initiative, and are taking a few steps further to make sure that we are being trained K-five across all elementary level. It's a lot. So if you wanna learn more, and again, this was only a small portion of what was discussed. And our meetings are not very long. I mean, they're, we keep them concise, but we pack them with great, um, information. It was a really awesome presentation, and we were just talking about learning more about the AIM training at a future PPC meeting. So we can look forward to that, because I think that'll be really exciting. Um, the next topic we learned about was the retirement overview, and as we are now facing a retirement cliff, which means that a large number of our certified staff population is currently eligible for retirement or soon will be. Approximately one hundred and thirty-six at the time of our last meeting. That's a lot. Um, so those are people that haven't already retired or announced that. Um, through some key incentives, the school district of Janesville is working to minimize or stagger the potential large number of retirements in the next year, um, and so in the future. Our benefits, HR staff have been working with a consulting firm, legal counsel have met with JEA, and also potential retirees to gain valuable input and create a plan. We learned briefly about the potential of introducing an, an HRA, which is a health reimbursement arrangement that would be funded by the employer, and retirees could use this to reimburse themselves for the person, for the purchase of the possible additional health insurance coverage. There are a lot of details that are going to be finalized, but, um, this was a really good presentation for us to see what, um, is being worked on. So we now have a better idea of what will be seen. We will be seeing a finalized, uh, um... We will be seeing a finalized, uh, rollout of what, what that will look like at our August meeting, and then that will be presented to the full board shortly thereafter. So you can look forward to seeing that, um, in completion, uh, in August. Um, if you have more questions about that presentation, I would encourage you to check out the June PPC meeting on our website. Um, last, we moved forward a number of policies that were approved tonight in consent agenda, but that was just something that we talked about as well. Um, just to note that there will not be a July PPC meeting, but we met yesterday for agenda planning for our August PPC meeting, so we are all set to, um, get that in place. Um, and that meeting will be Monday, August fifth, and our next planning session will take place Monday, August twelfth. As always, if you have questions or you would like us to talk about something, get in touch so that we can get that on the agenda for, um, our next planning session. Thanks.
All right. How am I doing?
You're doing great.
Okay.
Future meetings, Denise.
Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute, I got a couple of things. Just want to, uh, in the mail today, I've got the latest WASBA Resolution Book. You have to submit a resolution by the September fifteenth. You can go to the website and navigate to see this, but if you'd like your own booklet about current resolutions, just let me or Denise know and we'll get you your own copy. Kind of interesting work, what our association does politically and what they stand for. And then lastly, too, I had to click, clarify with Denise, I was getting this email from J.P. Morgan Chase, wanting me to open up a document and sign something. And I kept getting it, and I go, this doesn't seem right to me, but it is, so.
I've signed.
You've signed.
I signed it a long time ago.
You signed, I just signed it this afternoon.
You were the latecomer because I noticed you didn't sign it.
So is this the three of us? And I'm telling myself this because.
It's a reminder for yourself.
All right, I signed it already.
I'll text you tomorrow to sign it.
But it was, it just, it just was like, why am I getting this? It's just unusual. But anyway, all right, what do you got, Denise?
Can I say something?
Please.
So as we think about safety and we think about fiscal safety, what Kevin did was awesome. He didn't sign it, he called to verify and then do that. So that has been fiscally safe. So just as we think safety, it's many aspects of safety that have been.
This is where it really counts.
Talking about that, a little caution. Can I talk? I wasn't close. Thanks, Denise. Sorry to pick on you. Uh, a little caution going along with Kevin's caution. You get emails all the time. Do not open the email just to quid be quizzical what it might be. We found out that we looked at one, thinking I'm pretty safe as a former IT manager. They deposited a little transfer thing on there, and they were starting to pick. I caught it, but not before they got one of my bank accounts. No, no, we, we stopped that, that ended up with a five hundred and a twenty-dollar one, but we were able to stop it. But I just want to say, don't even open them, don't look at them, delete them. If they ask questions that look suspicious. Thank you, Kevin.
Um, upcoming meetings, the Finance, Buildings and Grounds Committee, thank you, Greg, for letting me say this, um, will be on Tuesday, June eighteenth, at three P.M. here at the Educational Services Center. And the next Board of Education meeting will be on Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, at six P.M. here at the E.S.C.